Um, six.
Okay, so this, I'll just start.
Yes.
Yes. So this is the presentation for Response to Instruction and Intervention.
I've already given the introduction to that one.
We're looking at a framework for K-12 instruction, building collaborative structures to support students academically and socially. So, um, what is Response to Intervention? So, um, before that, we do a lot of, we, we, we provide a lot of services for our students. Do a lot in terms of best practices for instruction, but we don't necessarily have a container to, um, like, describe it. And so, a couple of years ago, it actually came from, um, our conversations. It's come from a few conversations, but it really started to formulate, I think, actually, maybe three, four years ago, from, um, our initial WASC self-study from the high school. And we started talking about, um, what do we do? How do we respond to students, um, regardless of whether they're, um, at grade level, above grade level, below grade level? And so, we started to look at the, um, framework, um, Response to Intervention. So, it's a framework for, um, K-12 instruction based on data-driven decisions, which provides access to quality and accelerated learning for all students, both academically and socially. So, it's a framework that addresses not only the students' academic needs, but also their social, um, emotional and behavior needs. Um, in an RTI framework, effective practices are implemented in all, even though it says "implemented", are implemented in all aspects of the school, but it's, um, it is the effective practices you should see in all aspects of the school. So, it's not, um, a program, it's not a program, which I'll get to that, but it encompasses what we do for certain subgroups, what do we do for students total, what do we do for students, um, socially, et cetera. And then, simply, how do, how do we respond instructionally to student performance, achievement, outcomes, and needs? So, it doesn't matter where they are on the spectrum. It's, it is a framework to state or to describe and to illustrate how we respond to all students. So, why RTI? Um, it provides a structure and a container. Um, it focuses on the goal to accelerate learning for all students. Um, provides systematic preventions, interventions, and accelerations to address the needs of each child. Um, it aligns research-based, um, teaching and learning practices. Provides strategic professional development emphasizing collaboration. And, um, it makes teaching and learning visible and it focuses on equitable outcomes for students. Um, what RTI is not, so although RTI sometimes is described differently, or schools may use it differently, but it's not for special education only. And a lot of times, that, that has been a myth. It's not for special education students only. Special educat-, uh, special education students are part of the all program, so it's for all students. Um, it's not a system for tracking. It is not a single program. In fact, RTI is not a program. It is a, a framework or a process. Um, it is not to be used by one or two teachers, so we do not have RTI teachers. Um, we have, again, it's a framework and it's what we do every day for all students. Um, it's not interventions alone and it's not an instructional program. And so, that, and that is defined, um, in terms of if anyone wants more information, that comes directly from, um, the California Department of Education website. It is a tier delivery model and, oh, good. I thought the, at first I thought, um, the triangle wouldn't happen. So, let me do all tier threes. So, it's a tier model, so what you look at is a tier one. What, your tier one is your core program. And it's what all students need and what all students receive. So, it's your effective common core instruction. So, it's your common core standards. It is what you do for your, um, um, your social or your character education program. All students receive that. However, when you conduct, um, your assessments or your tests, sometimes you have students who are not responding to the instruction, or they're not responding to it, um, in, in terms of, it may be information that could either be, um, something that it's hard for them to understand or reach a process, or maybe something that's above their, I mean, that they actually are more, are more advanced in terms of the learning. So, what you do is you look at your tier, then those students receive what you call Tier Two services, which are for targeted students, um, and those are your supplemental interventions for some identified students. So, when you all talk about the supplemental services, or what is it? How do we, um, target students who need, um, additional instruction? They receive Tier Two instruction. Um, and then you have your Tier Three students, what individual students need. So, it should only, at any moment in time, your Tier Three, um, services should only apply to five, five to 10% of your population at any time. And so, those are your intense interventions for individual students. Um, the next tier delivery model is just an example of what the California Department of Education provides, and it just kinda gives you a little bit more detail, um, with that. However, in Tier One, Tier One, again, is your first good teaching in the classroom, which includes whole group instruction, your small group instruction, differentiated instruction, workshop, one-on-one support, school-wide behavioral systems, et cetera. So, Tier One is just good teaching. It is your best practices and all students have access to Tier One services. So, both intervention and acceleration happen at Tier One. And your Tier Two services, it's only, those, those services are for some students. It's not for everyone. And so, those are strategic interventions and instruction that's provided for the child for a specific amount of time. So, it's not a place to go. They don't stay there forever. Um, so, in terms of, sometimes you'll hear, like, learning centers. It's not a place for them to stay all year long. It's just a place for them to receive that int-, that, um, some, some provided supplemental services, and then they are supposed to receive their services in their general classroom. Tier Two can happen in, but however, it can't happen in the classroom, um, when you have small groups. And then, instruction and services are very strategic and specific. Um, it is additional instruction and support and does not substitute for instruction in the general class. And teams of staff, um, can work with students who need Tier Two services and instruction. So, again, a Tier Two, it's not a program. There's no curriculum that goes with it because you're supposed to know what those students need, um, in terms of their skills. At Tier Three, Tier Three instruction and services are intent supports of services. So, again, it's not a place to go. It is not special education. However, only a small number of students should, um, need or receive Tier Three services, and it does not fix the student. So, it's not a place where you send them. They should be fixed, and by the time they get back to the regular classroom, they should be at grade level. Um, because all of it is, it's, um, the, how we respond to students, it's about what are the best practices? How can you work in collaboration? How can teachers work together to, to help increase or accelerate student performance? And then, it's also reserved for students who really need intense supports. So, you must have data and you have to have a process in order to understand which students will need those supports. So, the student support goal is to create a systematic process that ensures every student receives the additional time and support needed to learn at high levels. Um, and creating the foundation is collective responsibility, meaning that we all are part of instructing students, and we all have a role and a place in terms of what those students, student needs are. Um, you create teacher teams in RTI framework, and you also create school-wide teams. And then, there's concentrated instruction, convergent assessment, meaning that the, the assessments are very specific. It's very, it's paced and structured, um, and, um, because you want to accelerate a child's learning. And then, um, in, in a framework like this, students don't have access to all, to all services. They only have access to some, some of the services if it's needed. So, critical teams. So, currently, this is what is occurring at each school site. Um, while we transition to a complete RTI framework or process, um, because some of, there are some needs, this is what we currently have. So, at ESS, there is a, um, there's an RTI collaboration team that meets once a week. And what that team is responsible for, they're responsible for the, the support in all tiers. Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three. And there's, it's a combination of people who are members of the teams that you see below you. So, there's an instructional leadership team. In this case, all 13 teachers who exist at the Emory Secondary School team is your instructional leadership team. Um, we have a behavior management team. And though, and in the behavior management team, those teachers are primarily responsible for, um, the, the behavior management cycle or the character education practices, or the student social, um, social and emotional and behavior practices at Tier One and Tier Two. And then, you have an intense intervention team, which is, in both schools is where, this is where the need is. So, um, when we talk about that five or 10% of students who need some of those supplemental services, we, while we have teachers that are there, um, we don't necessarily have someone who's there to do the intense services, like, the one-on-one, the two-on-one services. But we have, currently at ESS, there are, um, the counselor and the two, um, learning center or education specialists can, um, complete the intense intervention team, and they do their best in terms of serving students', serving students. And then, there's what you have the cost team. That's the coordination of services team, which are mostly your wellness people. So, the wellness people are responsible for Tier Two and Tier Three. Um, and where they provide small group counseling, individual counseling, family resource center, um, counseling for parents, et cetera. Critical teams at NEH. The overall arching team is the student success team, which is the team where most, where the referrals for students, um, come in. They have an instructional leadership team that, um, who, their focus is on the professional development, the staff development, the best practices, the curriculum on the academic side. Um, at NEH, there's a behavior support team that just started, and that team will, will, will model what the behavior management team at ESS does that. And the one at ESS has actually been established for probably the last two to three years. Um, with NEH, they'll start to look at some of the climate. So, they'll look at the climate, look at, you know, referrals, some of the developmental, like, what is it? What's needed developmentally for children, particularly those when they transition from the fourth, fifth grade into the middle school grades? So, that's what their team does, and they study and they think about those services. And then, education specialists, um, we have that are, um, we have four, um, who are part of the learning center. And so, trying to really create the learning center as a place where we can provide intervention. We're not there yet at all, because we probably need on that team an intervention specialist, since currently, our education specialist provides services for our special education students. And then, um, there's also a cost team at NEH. So, some of the next steps is just to, which I would provide more information because there's a lot. It's just to provide, like, um, our next step is to, is to continue to, to develop and design a systematic process, which is something I want to bring back to the board in terms of how does that process work? And then, to strengthen, um, team formation and definition. So, while we have some teams now, but, but our goal is to, as students, um, as we know what students need, are those the right type of teams that we need to support students? And then, to also bring back, um, what the actual practices and services look like, so you all have an idea of what those are. So, questions, comments, discussion? I know that was fast, but I did pretty good. I think that was seven minutes.
You know, I had a question. I think, um, if I'm, if I'm following well, and again, I've heard, I've heard this phrase and similar comments and, um, uh, discussion about RTI framework. It's almost, um, to me, it sounds as if the, the direction is for the district to adopt, um, a framework or a way of being, in a sense, in terms of how we, um, um, address the educational process, or in terms of the tiers, Tier One, Two, and Three. So, um, from a, and I guess what'll come from this, because it's kinda connected to the LCAP and the, you know, if you can pinpoint dollars spent to increase or enhance or, um, bring forward, um, stronger, better, than from one year to the next. Is that something that will, I mean, is there, is from the PD end, is that where a lot of the funding is? To kinda revamp how people are thinking about, um, how things are framed in a different way? Because it's not so much like a department, but you are responsible as a collective in this, in this role and this, but it's like reorganizing or retooling yourselves to fall into these, um, specific categories, I guess.
And, um, at ESS, it's become a paradigm shift, meaning that they think differently in terms of how to support students. What we had there was, everyone wanted to help students, but they were duplicating the services. And there was no, there wasn't necessarily a process or a way of thinking in terms of how to support them. Um, I think at NEH, the, a lot of, they're not where they need to be, but a lot of the services are there, but there's no connection, because there was no container. So, while we have a lot of great things that are going on, how do we know that what we're doing actually, um, supports our students or, or helps increase their performance or strengthen their performance? And so, so at NEH, it's more of, what's all this, all the things that we're doing? And how can we contain and how can we make, it makes sense in terms of a process? At ESS, it's been more of a paradigm shift. Like, what we're doing doesn't work, particularly in a traditional high school, which is, which out of the process and thinking about this, came the block schedule. So, because then, in a block schedule, you can provide more differentiated instruction. You can provide more small group instruction. Um, you can provide more services at Tier One, where before, in a six-period day, based on this population, we could not support students at a Tier One level. So, therefore, you would try to create all these Tier Two and Tier Three services, which meant people would come and say, "We need this type of teacher. We need this type of person," which increased costs, but we didn't look at it in terms of what can we already do at Tier One in, in the school. So, I would, so I think it's more of a paradigm shift, one. And then, it's also making the connections in terms of what we are already doing and how do you see all those connections in a framework? Because basically, when students come to school, how do we, and when parent brings a child to school, what is it that we do to respond to their needs, based off of their performance or based off of their emotional behavior and social needs? So, I don't know if that answered your question, but...
No, I'm, but, you know, it just drove me, and I don't know how. I'm like, this right here at 12:15, I have no idea. But, um, but the other piece to that, you just, um, triggered another thought was, um, you know, with that advantage, really, I mean, how do we determine whether or not this, this, um, as a framework is, um, is effective for our size? For, I mean, it sounds like it works for a size, right? I mean, it seems like that's, um, uh, you could, the benefits are that, um, with our size of our district, there's the opportunity. I mean, the, the effectiveness is probably higher, because we are smaller and we have to think differently. Um, but I'm just curious, when, you know, in terms of evaluating whether or not, um, this, you know, gets us where we need to go, or people are accepting of their role or responsibility in that framework? How long does it take? I mean, you know, how long would you say it would, um, in terms of evaluate whether or not it's effective overall or over time?
So, so, um, one of the workshops, it was, one of the workshops in terms of the influencers workshops that I had to attend last year, Mike Meadows, is, um, one of the leading researchers in terms of RTI. It doesn't matter the size of the school, because what RTI is, RTI is, is, it responds to, it doesn't matter if it's one student who's falling behind. This is what we do to respond to that student. If we have a student who's two grades above, how do we respond to that student? If we have a student who is on their way of flunking out of school, how do, do we respond? So, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, I can line up 100 students and each and every one of them benefit from the framework, because it, because each and every child is taught. Each and every child is assessed. So, once you receive their assessment, what do you do with that student? So, it is, it's more of, it is, it's a framework to say, it's not a, because if you evaluated it in a way that it's a program, then you're looking for, does it work? This is a framework saying, how do we respond to our children? And we need to make sure that we have services that will, that will, that will support the needs, no matter what happens in terms of their performance. So, I, I, so I think, I mean, my goal is to bring more information back to you, so you can kinda start to see it. But, the, to answer your other question, in some schools, it takes three, takes three to five years, sometimes seven years, to get the process. See, this is just the framework. And, and while I, I place the framework in front of you to get a basic understanding, the process is another story in terms of what is happening at both schools. So, a lot of times, when you hear the teachers, like, and they'll say, "Well, students aren't learning. I need this." That is about, does the process work? And then, we can determine whether we need that service, because does the data lead us to that service?
Wester describes, uh, RTI as not a program but a process. And so, uh, to, 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 um, Ms. Allen's point. And that is what requires even differentiation at the school site level with the teachers themselves, and may even require our own scope and squeak, sequence related to professional development for teachers, and how they get up to speed with learning how to address the needs of each and every student each and every day.
Well, based on what I just heard, um, what I don't see when we talk about, um, I guess, assessing the student and their needs. What I would like to see with this is, how do we, um, how do we assess or find out what the student is good at?
So, the...
Whether they're talented, they, you know...
You mean, like, what type? Like, talents in terms of what?
I mean, I mean, just what are they good at? You, you know, is it, it, it could be hands, it could, they could be good at hands-on, but not good in science. How do we determine? Because, as you say, it's really assessing the child, I mean, the student, whether they're at the highest level or, or at the lowest level. So, in our assessments, how do we assess what, you know, what talents or what they're good at?
You mean, learning styles?
Yeah, I think you, you may be, you may be meaning learning styles. So, learning styles is when, um, do you have a child who's more visual, a person who's auditory, or a person who's hands-on? So, you have people, so this, this is a, this is a classroom right here. People who are auditory work well in a setting. They like to listen, and that's what they do well. A person who's hands-on runs out of this setting. So, you will, you will rarely get a person in this classroom setting, because this is actually a learning setting. You will not get a hands-on person in a setting like this. And then, you have people who are visual who love the PowerPoints. They like the PowerPoints because they wanna see it. They wanna see what we're talking about. So, I think when you, so in those is what you call, you get, you get that information from, um, of your formative assessments. So, your formative assessments are the ones where you do quick assessments. You have to do cycles of inquiry. You think about the student. Is it a, is the child a visual learner? Are they auditory or are they more hands-on? And then, when you less, when you plan lessons, you plan lessons to address their modality.
So, this, this framework wouldn't address that?
This framework is part, this framework contains where it is. So, that, that, that lives in all three. That's good teaching. When, what you're talking about is good teaching. At all times, I should always assess. I'm always planning. I'm always making goals, and I'm always testing it out in a set, another formative assessment to make sure that this, the strategy will work for that child.
But I would think if we were, through this framework, if we were assessing students, that would be a part of the assessment, to figure out, you know, are they audible? Are they visual? I mean, what, you know, whether, whether they're learning styles? I mean, whether they're good at? I mean, how do, how do, as a teacher, you know, or as a district, you know, we, um, educate this child to their, to their best? Not our best, but to their best.
Yeah, and again, that's where you learn from formative assessments. So, you have some children who have, who have a dominant style, but some of them who have two of the, of the three. And so, the, the, there's a process of assessing students, but what you're getting into, and I could always bring that back as a learning lesson as well, is what you, is, is cycles of inquiry. And actually, how do you take data? How do you actually create a lesson? And how do you make goals to address the needs of students?
So, this, so this framework wouldn't address that?
This framework would, because what you would see is you would, you would see format, so in core learning, you would see formative assessments. That's all part of what you would see, cycles of inquiry. And that's what I wanna bring back to say, what are the best practices? What you're describing is what you would call a best practice.
Okay.
And so, you would see that on, you would see that in this framework, because then I would state, where does that best practice live? In Tier One, Tier Two, or Tier Three, and most, and, um, and that's the difference between, like, diversion and convergent assessments. So, you would see those two different, you would see divergent more on a Tier One versus a Tier Two or a Tier Three.
That makes sense. So, I had a similar question, at least I thought it started in a similar place, as Member Dwyans. But, um, it, it, you know, re, looking at this at, at first, it seemed like it was more, um, like a remedial deficit model. That it's saying, you know, here's the instruction. Who's having trouble? All right, what, what do we need to do to remediate that student, um, to get them, you know, learning what we're trying to instruct them on? And that, you know, it, it assumes that the problem is in the student.
Right.
As opposed to saying, well, actually, maybe, the problem's in us. We haven't figured out
Right.
how to untap
Right.
this student's native, uh, you know, constructive potential. Uh, and maybe it's a learning style thing. Maybe it's, you know, we, we haven't asked them to write sentences about baseball. We've asked them to write sentences about Dick and Jane, you know, um, whatever, you know, the reading today in the class. But if you really started to ask them to write sentences about something they were interested in or, or, you know, got them in some kind of project involved in sports, but you were teaching math through them, you would start to unlock, you know, their, their, um, learning and, and tap into it more.
I think they're, I think they're, I think they're kinda talking about doing a VARC inventory on students' learning styles or something like that.
Well, I think, that's, you could do that. That isn't, you could do that, and it still may not necessarily mean that you help, um, improve the performance of the child. But I hear, what you all are describing is just good teaching. And what, and I think with Member Dice, when you were talking about, what is the PD coming? The PD comes in from good teaching. See, Tier, see, typically, remember, you are absolutely right. Most people use RTI as a deficit model, and it's not a deficit model. What it should be is that you're responding to the needs of your students. You may have a child who was five grade levels above, but not socially ready to move anywhere. They need a different type, they need a different set of services. I can't promote them five grades ahead. I'm not promoting you five grades ahead, because socially, you're not ready. But I need to meet your academic need. So, with your academic need, it's, and it's about what is the best practice? That's the strategy, the best practice, the best instruction, um, for that specific need. And what is the best assessment to assess whether or not what I taught you is meaningful and improves your learning? So, it's, so what you all are describing is just good teaching. And yes, you do need PD in that, because it's sometimes, it, it will, it shifts the paradigm. At the high school in particular, um, the, the, the point system does not, the point system, first of all, Common Core is going to, um, cut all that out. But typically, at high school, you do your work. Somebody gives you a lecture. You do your work. You turn it in, you give them so many points. People love to look school loop, but what they're looking at is school loop, is you're looking at a point system. You're not looking at what your child learned. So, an A means, an A can be very subjective, because it means you're turning 10% of the homework. Maybe you have 30% on test, 40, you know, whatever, another percent on classwork. It's meaningless. But the conversation that we have at the high school about that is shifting, is shifting what, how we teach, because we know that doesn't mean that you've mastered anybody's standards. But Common, but Common Core is going to force people to have that conversation. But that's just an example of, this is where the PD comes from, but it's in this framework, because that is just best teaching one-on-one at, at Tier One. And then, and therefore, it will address Tier Two, Tier Three. But I think as I start to add what services look like, it'll help give you all a picture as well.
Well, that, that was another one of my questions, was, you know, can you give us an example, uh, of, uh, you know, how a student at NEH or ESS has been helped, either by, you know, Tier Two and/or Tier Three services? Because, because I, I need some more concrete understanding of what, what the, what they're going to get, what they would, you know, and how that, maybe if you have some real-life examples of how we've sort of helped some students.
Mm-hmm. I can give you an example. I can give you an example, both socially and academically. Academically, you can have a student who, um, they do well in English, language arts, math. Maybe their subject that they're not too, um, good in. And they actually may be good in everything except for estimation. And the reason they don't understand estimation is because they don't understand place value. And the only, the only skill I need to help them on is place value. And for whatever reason, they're not processing, and they may need more manipulative. I will send them to a, to like, a learning center for a Tier Two service, and I only need someone to work with them for six weeks or four weeks, only on that one skill. While I'm still teaching estimation, but there's something in place values that they didn't get or whatever was two or three years ago, and they're now a fifth grader or a sixth grader. Um, and so, at, at the learning center, you would have someone who would specifically work on place value, helping them understand, helping them get the basics. So, therefore, that helps unlock, because they need to be able to estimate to do division. They need to estimate in order to, um, frac, in order to do fractions. But that's an example of, like, a specific skill. So, at Tier Two, I'd send, I, I then work with a small group on a specific skill. So, at a Tier Two, at that, with that, I can either send them to a learning center or my, me myself as a teacher, when I have whole group instruction and I'm conducting a workshop, I pull a small group of students who do, who still need help with, with, um, place value concepts. And because they don't have place value together, they can't, it's hard for them to understand estimation. But that's the next skill I need in order to teach the next standard that's coming up. So, that's an example of what you call a Tier Two service. Either small group in the classroom, or I may need to send them somewhere. Now, intense is, I have someone who place value may be, and they don't even have the basic understanding of numbers and, and how to align the numbers. Or they're two years behind. They're in the fifth grade and they're on a third or second grade level in math. But their reading language arts is actually pretty high. So, therefore, they may have intense services, meaning they may be intent, there may be intense services where they go to, uh, an intense, um, education specialist or learning center for six weeks, but they're working on that specific skill. Not everything, just that specific skill. And when they come back to the classroom, then they're able to, you know, um, uh, still understand the concepts that I'm presenting for the rest of the class. But that's an example. Another example socially is you have a student who, um, typically does well, A student, AB student at the high school, um, but for whatever reason, something traumatic has happened in their life. A divorce for them, from their parents. And so, you now see the grade slip. Not because the student is, not because the child doesn't know the information. They're distracted. And so, socially, you may send them to the wellness center to do small group, small group counseling. And with their peers, they don't stay there forever for the whole year. They're there, one, so they know they're not alone. Two, that they actually have colleagues who've gone through the same thing that you have, and for a specific amount of time, they just need to get that off their chest, so they can do well in class. But those are examples, that's just, those are just two of several examples that you would state in your container in terms of this is how we respond to student needs. So, that's just an example.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
It, it, does this model only deal with students who are struggling?
No.
Or does it also, I, I thought you had an example earlier. Maybe there's a student who's two grades ahead in something, and that, are, are they gonna get Tier Two services to, to say, "You know what? Here's, here's..." to say, you know what, here's, here's some extra work you can do, or, you know, we're going to move you on to grade, you know, five standards, even though you're, you're still in third grade?
Yeah, yes. So an example of that may be, those students, the service may be, I may have a classroom that I have four or five computers in the classroom, and when I conduct a workshop, those four or five, so this has happened to me, actually, I was in a school where I was the only sixth-grade teacher, so I had to differentiate instruction. But the tier two service I would provide for students who were, I had students who were on ninth grade, 10th grade level, and then I had some who were on second grade level. My students who were accelerated, they were the only ones who were provided the services, at that time, the computers were archaic, but they would have access to certain types of computerware, and they would have certain access to it, because that's what they needed in order to sustain, like, it would be like a performance-based task, or it'd be performance-based learning, or something like that. But that's what you would do, is you would provide that service for those students, because they need more of a challenge. So it's very similar to sometimes with the kindergartners, when they have, at the end, every kindergartner, at the beginning, they go home at 1:30, but you know there's a group that stays till 3 o'clock. So the group, so there's two groups. There's a group that receives services for intervention and acceleration, because many of them did not have preschool access. The other group are groups that have preschool access, but are working on a second and third grade level, yet socially, they're not ready to go to the second or third grade, but they have, they have project-based activities, or project-based learning, from 1:30 to 3 o'clock. So that's an example of looking at your assessment and addressing the needs of all your students. But you do that in a framework. So in a framework, what you would see is, you would see extended-day kindergarten, that would be one of them, and that's at your tier two, tier three level. And the extended day can be for intervention or for your acceleration.
If we weren't doing this, what would we be doing? I mean, what would, what's sort of a competing model of...
Yeah, I haven't heard of another model that is, so again, it's just a framework. Basically, what it does, it helps people understand what you do at school. So it's not necess, I don't, I don't think there's, and Dr. Lindell can state if she's heard one, but there's not necessarily a competing model. What the, what art, what, I think it has helped us is, one, it's helped the elementary school understand, this is what we do. So you're not doing anything new. The only thing that will change is the process, because there's a tendency to place students somewhere to fix them. That is a problem, and that, that shift has to, we have to have a different paradigm shift in terms of that. At the high school, it is, it is actually opened up what we don't have, and what we need, and how we have to teach differently in our classrooms. Because before, we treated our high school students like they were baby, like they were many adults in college, and they're not. You know, you still need to use the same practices that elementary school teachers use, in order for students to understand and process new information. So I don't know if there's, if I can say there's another model, it's just a framework, so everyone can understand, this is what we do with our students when they come to our district. This is what we do. The only thing that I don't have for you, which, again, you could spend a whole week doing this, you could spend a whole summer institute, is I don't have the, what I want to do in the future is to actually give you the visual where you can see the practices, like, this is what we do. And sometime, some of them are practices, and some of them are services that we need, that we may, may require another person, you know, to provide the service.
Is there, you know, your bullet about continue to develop, design systemic process, you know, so it seems a little bit intentional, though, you just said about, this is what we already do, just putting a framework around it. So are we doing this, or are we, are we developing doing this, or is the only thing that we're developing is a better articulation of what the, you know, reflective processes are for our teachers to be able to effectively do this?
It's everything you just stated, and it depends on the campus. Each camp, NEH and every secondary are at different places. So some of it applies more at the elementary's campus versus the high school, and then some of it applies more at the high school than at the elementary. I will say, state where we need to really develop our, the process piece. And the process is just really the referral piece, and how you move students through tier one, tier two, tier three, and to articulate it. But it's, but it's really, I think, the articulation, because once you articulate what we have, that's the current assessment, then you can do a needs assessment based on what is it that you really need, because this is, this is where you want your students to be, in terms of performance. All right, I'll come.
So can you, you know, is the plan that we can definitely say in three years, we will have instituted these processes, or one year, or...
That's, yes, that is the plan. Where like with Fidelity...
Yes.
We are actually implementing the RTI process.
And our teachers understand it, and we've had enough professional development, it's worth, so what's the timeframe for that?
I would say it's probably, it would probably be like three years. It's more understood, I believe, it's more understood at the high school than it is at the elementary, because right now, at the elementary, they don't necessarily know what, where their practice falls in tier one, tier two, tier three.
What you find in, in systems where RTI is like in full swing, and has been for some time, is that you won't, you won't find, you'll find teachers that are working really hard, and really completely understanding the needs of each individual child, and the child understanding their needs as well. So there's like a level of empowerment that's associated with it, as it relates to learning styles, or anything else sort of associated with how a student accesses knowledge, and also how the teacher supports that student in their learning. You also find that, that teachers, as they grow along that continuum, it's kind of like, I don't know if you remember the good old Madeline Hunter, you know, teaching, teaching a particular, how to teach an instructional lesson? Ms. Allen is right. I mean, RTI is a framework, it helps teachers to focus in on each and every student each and every day, and it also helps them to realize their role in it, rather than sending them out. And that is a shift, because we have spent probably the last 25 years sending students somewhere to fix them, rather than, rather than recognizing that the teacher has this responsibility themselves, let's say beyond like tier three and/or, you know, special ed services, and that sort, that sort of intervention level. But, which, which is a whole nother, you know, set of statutory requirements and rights that students have as it relates to special ed. But it is, it's great, it's just, it's really understanding your role in being an effective teacher with each individual student. And it does give it a framework and a process for that to happen. And I would venture that in three years, you won't, you won't have teachers coming, once, once they're completely immersed in what it means to respond to students in that way, you won't find teachers probably coming, you'll probably find teachers and parents coming to board meetings more like what we saw this evening, related to additional supports and services related to, you know, like enhancing computers, or technology, or courses advancement, rather than needing an intervention teacher per se. Because they will see them all, they will see, they will see themselves as intervention teachers, and know that they have eight students in their classroom, or seven students in their classrooms, that need very specific and precise levels of support, that might be different from, you know, what we would classify as whole group instruction. And our workshop model that we have, that might be another great presentation to give, or have the board actually go into classrooms and take a look at the workshop model, some of the really great ones that are going on. There's some awesome stuff going on in the classrooms, and it looks like, in many ways, like, you know, the teachers are the ring, the great ones are the ring masters of a three-ring circus. I mean, they know what's going on in each one of those corners of their room, and kids are doing a lot of different things, but the teacher is on point with knowing precisely what's happening. And that requires a great deal of planning, a great deal of subject matter content expertise, and a great deal of pedagogical practice, which is what Ms. Allen is talking about as well. And it's, and it has incredible, incredible potential, and we've just scratched the surface.
Any other questions or comments? Any members of the public have questions or comments?
All right. Come up to the mic. We want to hear your public comment, Mr. Cho.
Quarter to one.
I was just going to say, this sounds like a good framework to use for computer-based intervention for students who are falling behind with their computer skills. It would be an assessment, if we could develop a...
Like Khan Academy, again, that'll accelerate with some of the other innovations that are coming up. So we can do both, those who are, who may be struggling, and also those who need to be challenged. But you would do the same thing, you'd have the programs, and different tiers of students would have certain access, depending on what their needs are.
Yeah, I just haven't seen a computer-based intervention kind of test or anything in place, have you?
Yes.
There's few, there are a few.
To get these kids ready.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's now December 12, and we're going to...